...October 7, 2024 to order. Thank you for coming. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lisa, would you do roll call, please?
Marian Rosa.
Here.
Tandon Mertz.
Here.
Robert Cassino.
Here.
Anthony Cebola.
Here.
Gary Lafferty.
I think he's on, I think he's online. Can you hear him? He's not, okay.
Karina Moyn.
Here.
Jonathan Marley.
Here.
Robert Brutalik. And Richard White.
Here. Next is public participation. Is there anyone that would like to address us? Yes, please. Mr. Massey.
Good evening. Joe Massey, 33-plus, in Few Street in Oakville. Marian, I hope you feel better.
Thank you.
I heard. All right, I'm here for three things. The first thing on item 10H, I wanted to know if that ordinance is gone to the ordinance committee yet or whether or not it is going to go and there will be a public hearing when it's ready to be looked at.
It has not gone. It will go, and there will be a public hearing.
Okay, good. Second item, I wanted to thank Dean Silphone for what he did. I know you have a recognition form, and Tony's here to get it.
Great.
But when I asked Dean to contribute the roof to the Town of Watertown, he said yes immediately, like his father and brother did 44 years ago. It's basically the kind of family they are, and they need the recognition because they deserve it. And the third thing is that when I was up there that morning that they stripped the roof, Dean pulled me aside and told me that roof is moving. The whole top of the gazebo is in a shake, and I reported it to Jerry, and he was going to report it on. It needs to be looked at from a structural engineer because there were major modifications made to that gazebo about 12 years ago that totally stripped the underpinning we put in it back when we built it. There was no movement then, there's movement now. It's got to be looked at, and it's, I, it's got to be done by a structural engineer to make recommendations as to how to shore it up or how to fix it or, because it is a danger. It could, it could come down under a big wind.
Okay.
Okay? And those are the three things I wanted to talk about and make you aware of what the situation was.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Al Mickel, 95 Woodvine Avenue. I, I think I might be too late on this, but I want to talk about public participation, mainly the second public participation. In your last town council meeting, you, during your chairman's report, you passed a recommendation to go to the ordinance subcommittee. It was done without a vote. I think that was rather unusual, coming straight from you to the ordinance committee. No one in the council had a chance to, to discuss going to the ordinance subcommittee. I think that was probably not done correctly. The letter from the bicentennial subcommittee to the town council that you mentioned was missing from the minutes. I'm just hoping it would be put in the minutes. It, it might contain some relevant information why the bicentennial subcommittee wants to fold their tent and come into the, to the, as a commission in the town council. I'm, I'm just wondering why that was done. Also, on September 5th, you, chairperson, was the secretary of the bicentennial committee, and during that time, there was no vote taken, but it's only three people, so I imagine consensus was taken. But then you decided to go to the town attorney to get the ordinance done. This was done even before the town council meeting. I think the timing of that was wrong. I'm not sure which hat you were wearing, whether you were talking as the chairman of the town council or the, the secretary of the bicentennial moral committee. It's confusing how that issue was generated. With all these mistakes, I would suggest the council start over, but I think it's way too late for that. So, in, in closing, I personally don't think the bicentennial committee should be resolved. I don't think we need another commission in the town to doing the same thing that the Park and Rec does, take care of all the gazebos and maintenance in the town. I'm not sure what function they're going to follow, but I guess they'll have to sit during the public hearing and find out what exactly they plan on doing that the Park and Rec can't do for them. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to talk to the council?
Robert Sager, 47 Ford Street, Salington, Connecticut. I'm here today regards to a letter received from the town council. I'm a retiree from the Town of Watertown. I received a letter dated September 13, 2024 informing me that the town has been notified that Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield will be terminating the group Medicare supplement plans on January 1, 2025. I requested a copy of the Anthem letter that was sent to the town regarding this matter and received a copy from the town manager's office. The Anthem letter advised the town to contact the town's broker or the town Anthem account representative to, to discuss product solutions. My understanding regarding this matter, under the state statutes, the retirement benefits are protected regarding reducing or eliminating health benefits for retirees. Also, under the regulations of Connecticut state statutes, each Medicare supplement plan shall be guaranteed renewable. Regarding termination of group supplemental plans can only be terminated for non-payment of premium or material misrepresentation. My question to the council is, has the town been in contact with the broker or Anthem account representative as suggested by Anthem's letter? And two, has the town contacted the Connecticut State Insurance Commissioner regarding the letter sent by Anthem to the Town of Watertown informing them that the town is terminating health benefits for retirees?
This is something, sir, that we, we on the council don't handle. You're going to have to deal directly with the manager's office during the regular business day. We can't, we can't answer your questions.
I understand. I understand that this matter, but the council in the end approves these.
But you have to get, you have to get answers to your questions from the manager's office during the business day. I'm sorry, we can't answer them. We don't have the answers.
All right, you're just made aware of it. I understand that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there someone else that would like to address the council?
Catherine Camroth, 31 Cottage Place in Oakville. At the last council meeting I attended, the town manager, Mr. Ramo, took the blame for dropping the ball on the $63,000 senior center grant. The council was then asked to appropriate $8,000 from the taxpayers' general fund to purchase the state of Connecticut's portion of that parcel, parcel of land at Route 262 and Buckingham Street that is being turned into a civic park. We were told that the state wanted $16,000 for that land, and town manager Ramo negotiated to quote, "save us $8,000 on the purchase." Shame on all of you council members for falling for that sham. The taxpayers were not saved $8,000. Rather, we were, we incurred an expense, unexpected expense of $8,000, and you all know it. We were told that that property belonged to the town. So whoever messed that up and will take, who will take responsibility for that $8,000 cost? Who didn't do their due diligence before clearcutting state property? Is it the town manager again? The taxpayers can't afford these type of blunders. And then there's another one. I'm going to give you something that, to look at. Several years ago, the town prepared to sell the old town hall and asked for interested parties to provide proposal presentations, and three did. The presenter chosen was not able to make a go of it, but the town failed to reach back out to the other two presenters, so I did. I contacted Alaton Myrtle because he had wanted to restore the building to its origins with a vision and a plan that he was prepared to carry out. I handed you that email, that was the last email I got from Alaton Myrtle, on June 23, 2022, wherein he says that he was told the town was not going to sell it because the town wanted to do something with it, but then his, the realtor let him know that the town had an agreement with someone else. It was sold in November of 2022 to an LLC whose principal is the chairman of the Republican Town Committee, who has no plan for the property. Recently, I asked his wife what was going to happen there, and she stumbled with, we think it might, at some point. So why did the town manager sell the property to someone who did not have a plan? It may make sense to the town manager and the LLC, but it doesn't make sense to the public. I consider this a major blunder in the historic district. If that property had been sold to Alaton Myrtle, he, it would now be a beautifully restored office building rather than a vacant eyesore. Now I'm going to change subjects, something else on my mind. I would ask, like to ask that the chairpersons of our town commissions undergo some type of training for Robert's rules and FOI. In the last few months, I've witnessed that the planning and zoning chair does not know that once the commission votes on a matter, the documentation regarding that becomes available to the public through freedom of information. The economic development chairman allowed a resident to review a draft document as well as sit at the commission's table. The police commission chairman doesn't know the difference between insurance liability limits, deductibles, and premium costs, and the chairman of the water and sewer commission does not seem to understand that he controls the meeting and not staff. While we are used to hearing that these people are volunteers, they are your appointees, and all of this is a poor reflection on the council. It is not enough that these people want to do the work of the community, they more so should want to get it right for the community. And I'm going to continue to ask that commission vacancies be filled by any resident who wishes to serve and not just Republicans and Democrats. I believe having a larger pool of our commission, for our commissions would cure a lot of what ails them. And then I just wanted to tell you that at the economic development, meeting, the economic development coordinator was complimented for getting a, getting a $400,000 grant filed, not that he got the grant, but filed, on time, when he only learned about it four days before. So it is possible to get grants filed on time. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council?
Good evening, all. I have a very simple question to ask you, which I'm sure maybe-
Excuse me, could you give us your name first for the record?
Certainly, certainly. I'm Liz Vasiotyansky, spelled W-A-S-I-U-T-Y-N-S-K-Y. I live at 514 Sylvan Lake Road in Oakville, and I've lived there since 1956. That's a long time. In all of that time, and here's my question, I was not aware, and I'm hoping that you will get me aware, that we have a treasurer in this town, a town treasurer, and I don't know his name or her name, and I wish you would tell me, please.
I don't believe we have that position any longer.
When is the last time we ever had it?
2021.
2021. But we do need, I'm sure you know better than I, that we need somebody who acts as if he or she were a treasurer.
Yeah, it's handled in the finance department, those responsibilities.
But they can't be, as I've learned in the little bit of interest that I've had in the question, because I didn't want to be too stupid in appearing before you today. I understand that there are positions in town government which cannot be filled by people of the same level. For example, a finance director and a treasurer cannot do the same job. They have to send, have their own signatures on various papers. How do we handle that here?
That's something I, I don't know off the top of my head. I'd have to get back to you.
Okay. Well, it's fairly important because from my perspective as a taxpayer, it turns out that the statutes of the state of Connecticut say that at any time, a taxpayer can come and ask the treasurer to open the records of income and outgo of money within the town. That's a wonderful statute for us living in a democracy. I think that you treasure it, Madam Chairman, and I treasure it as being a taxpayer. So whom do I go to ask a question of that kind if there's no treasurer?
If you would direct it to the town manager's office, I'm sure we'll get you any information you want.
But he cannot be the treasurer and statute-
No, I understand that, but he will give you answers to your question.
You and I are of the same age.
You're right.
And I don't think that we're treating one another very well because you've been in town government for a long time, ever since I've met you. So you certainly must be able to answer the question.
I don't, I couldn't tell you the figures in and out if that's what you're asking me to see.
Oh, no, 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 no. Then I misspoke. Perhaps I should have said it differently. State statute says that I, as a taxpayer in Watertown, can go to the treasurer of Watertown at any time and ask for information.
And the town manager's office could tell you who to speak with.
And I'm saying that he cannot be a treasurer.
No, I'm not saying he is. I'm saying he can tell you who to speak with.
Then would it be fair for me to stand up and to say thank you with the conclusion that we need a treasurer in this town as state law requires?
I can't answer that.
Through the chair. I'm 99% sure the role of treasurer is currently the assistant finance director. It was, it was brought up a few months ago at one of our meetings.
That is correct. The assistant finance director has taken on the role of treasurer to meet the statute, and that would be the contact person.
Okay, I have your answer.
Well, not entirely, because perhaps I can help then in your answer, sir. I, in, in being interested in the subject, and then more and more interested in the subject because it's a wonderful statement that the treasurer can and should, by law, open the books to a taxpayer in a given town. Also learned that on September, oh, I visited the, the, here's, here's the thing I forgot to tell you. I was in Hartford doing other business, and I walked into the treasurer's office. I found out that since my days working for state government, you don't walk into anything except to a person who very calmly and says, "Who are you and why do you want to go there?" So we're all seen as being terrorists, unfortunately, in state government offices. Anyway, when the people came down to talk to me from the treasurer's office, they also brought to me in answer to my question as to who is the treasurer of Watertown, they brought me something which was printed out with the date of September 13, 2024, and that, on that date, in Watertown, there was a Susan Zappone who represents, who is listed as finance director. Is that person still finance director? You mentioned something about an assistant.
Zappone is the interim finance director.
So she is the interim, still on the job, right?
That's correct.
Oh, okay. So that's why she's listed on the, on the letter, on the list.
I don't have the benefit of looking at the document you have in your hand.
I'm sorry. It's, it's a document that I think the treasurer might have gotten from OPM, from the Office of Policy and Management.
I still don't know what document you're referring to.
It's a list. The document is a six-pager, and it is a chief financial officer list on which every town of the 169 here in Connecticut is listed, and the first is the name of the municipality, given in alphabetical order. The second is the name of the person who is in the OPM's eyes, seen as the chief financial officer. Next is a phone number to that person and an email address for the person. So this is the, the information listing of state government when the question is posed to them, who is a treasurer in the Town of Watertown?
Excuse me, I, I certainly don't mean to cut you off, but we do have a five-minute time limit in public participation.
I guess I like to listen to myself talk.
No, that's okay.
Thank you so much.
You know, certainly call the manager's office if you have any more questions.
Okay, or you can call me.
You could leave your number if you'd like.
Is there anyone else that would like to talk to us this evening?
Before I sit down, can I ask you a question on F on the list?
Could you sit down? Could you talk into the mic? I can't hear you.
I said before I sit down. Frankie Popolowski, 35 Tesna Avenue in Oakville. On the agenda tonight, under F, it says, "Consider a resolution authorizing a bid waiver for the Water and Sewer Authority for the purchase of a sole source provider." Why do they want a bid waiver?
Madam Chairwoman, I think that that would be appropriate, a question that could be responded to during that line item or that item that we discussed. We'll explain that.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on to recognition.
Madam Chairwoman, I would like to present on, on your behalf, a certificate of excellence honoring Oakville Home Improvement, Dean Silphone, his uncle?
Brother.
His older brother, I apologize. Anthony Silphone is, is here to represent the company and, given by the Town, Watertown Town Council, in recognition of outstanding commitment and diligence to the citizens of the Town of Watertown with his donation of time, services, and materials for the bicentennial gazebo roof replacement. Recognition and appreciation are hereby bestowed upon Dean Silphone, dated at Watertown, Connecticut, the 7th day of October, 2024, signed by Marian Rosa, Chair, Watertown Town Council.
On behalf of my little brother, Dean, I'm going to figure it's been born, but I thought I started the company in 1963 in Oakville. And my, Mr. Silphone, too. Sure. Yeah, my father started Oakville Home Improvement in 1963 in Oakville, and many, many men, Joe Massey and a lot of other fellows that were in business, and I took it over in 1993, and Dean took it over in 2004. And he's doing a wonderful job. Chris is here representing Dean also, and I want to thank you and I want to thank Dean for being what he is and doing for the town, what my dad did, what I did, and my brothers, Joseph Vincent, deceased Vincent, and myself. We want to thank Watertown and Oakville for everything that you do for us, too, as far as being in this.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion for the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the September 16, 2024 regular meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anyone have any questions or corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone abstaining?
I'm abstaining, ma'am.
Abstaining.
Two abstentions. The motion passes. Our chairman's report. I don't have anything tonight. Subcommittee reports, do we have anything? We haven't had any meetings.
I don't think so.
Town managers' report.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman. I'll, I'll be very brief. We have a lot on the agenda tonight. Just an update on the emergency management. FEMA has been in and around Watertown canvassing residents and businesses just to collaborate with our residents and business owners to ensure that they're aware of any options that become available for them recovering some of the, for some of the damages that occurred to their property. We've officially entered into the budget season for the FY 2526. The budget prep book has been updated and distributed to department heads and managers. The municipal parking lot on Main Street, the Greenberg Building, will begin, will begin coming down tomorrow, October 8, at 8:00 a.m. The press will be on site to take some pictures of the building coming down, and please feel free to stop by if you'd like to see that initial piece of the building come down. And we are still in negotiations with White Collar that's ongoing. Thank you.
Through the chair. Yes. May I ask the town manager a question?
Sure.
Two questions.
Is it relative to the agenda?
It's relative to the, the Greenberg Building?
Sure.
That's okay. I, I'm just wondering, I've seen the, you know, construction equipment, but who, who's doing the work back there, and how was that approved? I don't remember, I just, I remember approving the minutes, I mean, sorry, the money from the funds, but who's doing the work?
I don't know. There's several contractors working on site. We're purchasing this as a completed project. We have no oversight as to who was hired or who wasn't.
The owner did it.
The, I'm sorry, so the owner is doing the, just for the demolition of the building?
Everything.
Including the paving?
Yes. The owner of the building is, we're purchasing a developed municipal parking lot.
Okay, all right, and how, why was that, how does that benefit- And how, why was that, how does that benefit the town? What's, what was the decision making there?
This went through the process, I don't remember the timeframe, but this has come in front of the council several times. We worked through that project. It was in the best interest for us to purchase this building or the property developed as opposed to trying to do it ourselves. I don't recall all the numbers, but it was definitely a benefit to the town.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all.
Oh, yes, I'm also, thank you.
Madam Chairman, just so you know, Councilmember Lafferty is online now.
He is online?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, new business.
Presentation.
We have a presentation by the Phoenix Advisors regarding our proposed debt analysis.
My name is Barry Bernabi. Just to try and move this along pretty quickly here, have some good news to share to the town about a recent bond refinancing and just to give you an overview of the town's existing proposed debt service. It's, it's a little tricky to see, but there's three main points that the town needs to consider whenever you issue new bonds for new capital. And those three things are interest rates, your bond rating, and your current debt profile. Now, this chart up here is kind of busy. You can't see all of it, but it's, it's a plot of the, the 10-year U.S. Treasury yield that goes back 55 years. On the far right-hand side, the story of it is that rates are not at all-time lows, but we were able to be successful in, in saving the town quite a bit of money on a recent bond refinancing. We also, one thing that benefited a little bit is the Federal Reserve cut interest rates by 50 basis points recently. And surprisingly, when they did cut, long-term rates actually went up higher after they cut short-term rates. But our timing was, the town's timing was perfect there, where we hit one of the lowest points in interest rates in the last couple of years. The other factor, so overall level of interest rates are not at all-time lows, but the town's timing was perfect. The other factor that determines the town's borrowing cost, just like all of us, when we get a car loan or a mortgage, they look at our, our credit score. The town has a credit score, but it's not called a credit score, it's called a bond rating. And if you can see on the left-hand side up there on, on your presentation, you'll see that the town is rated double A by Standard and Poor's. So it's only two notches from the highest rating possible. Two notches from Greenwich, two, two notches from all the wealthy Fairfield County communities. So that's, that's a very good rating to have and allows the town to borrow at a very favorable cost. Now, what factors go into determining that, that bond rating? And there's basically five major factors. They look at management practices. You know, for example, they like to see that the town's finance department is staffed appropriately. They like to see good communication between the town and the Board of Finance. Number two is the economy and demographics. They like to see new businesses coming into town and a growing grand list. And number three, number four, pretty straightforward, financial performance and debt management. And the last one there is long-term liabilities. It's not really a big problem for, for Watertown, but it's becoming more and more of a problem for many larger municipalities such as Waterbury, Hartford, New Haven, the state of Connecticut. These large pension liabilities or retiree healthcare costs are eating up more and more of, of the town's operating budgets. So all those five kind of come together in a pot. And that's what the rating agencies use to assign a bond rating to a municipality. So again, Watertown has a very good bond rating, something to be very proud of. And, and the good news here on, on page eight is that we were able to lock in new interest rates to refinance some old interest rates and the town saved about close to $945,000 after all issuance cost. So that's our net savings. And you can see there, bulk of the savings was captured in fiscal '25, which is the fiscal year we're in now, and also fiscal '26. So we always try and monitor this. We work closely with the town manager, the finance department, to monitor old bonds that were issued, monitor the new interest rates and try and capture savings if it's possible. So again, you could see that, that's going to be a good positive variance for the town this year in the current budget, to have interest rates come in lower than what was The other factor was, that I found very interesting is that we, we do all this on a competitive bidding practice. Typically, we get four or five bids when a town issues bonds. But when we look up here, the, Watertown received 13 bids from various underwriting firms, which is somewhat unprecedented. It shows that there is strong investor interest for the town's bonds and the more competition, the better. As you could see, the, the spread from that, that last column there, the TIC, which is the true interest cost, the winning bid was 2.44%. The town's old bonds were at like 4%. So we're able to lower that cost to the town and you could see that the more competition, the better. So interest rates, the town capitalized on that very effectively. Now, now the last component of, of your, of the town's existing and proposed debt profile is that if you look at this chart here, those blue bars are the town's existing principal and interest payments going forward. So if you look at that, you could see that it starts in fiscal '24 and it drops, and it drops off. So unlike my mortgage payment, that stays the same for 30 years, the town's debt service drops each year. It decreases each year. As the town pays off principal, the aggregate goes down. And one thing that we've, we've been very successful with the town over the years is as that debt runs off, we've been able to layer in new debt, whether it's for roads, schools, fire equipment, sewers, or whatever the case is, to layer it in with very minimal impact to the town's current budget. So as you could see here, I drew an arrow there, the town's current debt is about $7 million a year and it drops off. So when we look at the town's, what we call authorized but unissued, which means projects that are authorized but not yet issued yet. Currently, right now, the deck is cleared. Earlier this year, the town issued the last of the debt for the schools and for roads. So, so currently, right now, the deck is cleared, all the debt that's been approved has been issued. So there, there is some, some planning that the town could consider to, to look at. Again, having a high bond rating, the town really has a continuum to look at two options. Those blue bars, as I said, decrease each year. So if the town were to say, we don't want to borrow anymore, our taxes are too high, we want debt to come down, you certainly can do that. Debt will come down each year and it's my guess that your overall operating budget will still go up because, you know, there's inflation going on, wages go up, energy costs go up. Every year, there's a challenge putting that budget together. But the ironic thing is debt service is going to be going down for the next 20 years. So that, on the other end of the continuum is the town has to look at and say, listen, do we want to continue to invest in the community, in roads, in schools, public buildings, to improve the quality of life of residents? So without putting up too much analytical work, it is a lot of structuring that's involved. I try and do it graphically. On that chart there, again, those blue bars are debt that was already issued for previous capital projects. If the town were to consider issuing $5 million for whatever purpose, that little red bricks on top of the blue bars would be that $5 million that could be added. And what I find interesting, and I think it's, it's the point of the graph, is that that $5 million of proposed new debt would not push the town's current debt levels higher than it currently is right now. And again, the main reason for that is a high bond rating, you're borrowing at a low cost, interest rates are relatively low, and most importantly, your existing debt is decreasing. So that $5 million could be layered in without any increase in your debt budget. So if you want to go on to the next one, what if the town were to borrow $10 million? Those red bricks that are lopped on top of the blue bars is $10 million of new capital improvements for the community. Again, if you look at that, existing and proposed debt would still stay under your current debt budget as it is right now. So again, you got to remember, don't issue debt, debt will come down, or continue to invest in the community, borrow a moderate amount of new, approved new projects, and they could be layered in without any impact on the town's current debt service budget. And just moving along here, because I know you've got a lot on the agenda tonight, what if you wanted to borrow $15 million? This chart on page 14 allows the town to borrow $15 million. Now, it'd have to be spread out a little bit, not all in one year, but over the next two or three years, the town could borrow $15 million. Again, aggregate debt service would not go above current level. And $20 million, same thing, stretched out over three or four years now, the town could borrow $20 million without pushing debt up current levels. And just a final chart here is that over a period of five years, and again, I, I don't know if the town is interested in borrowing for various capital projects, but working with the town manager and the finance department, there is capacity to borrow up to $40 million over the next five years and it could be layered in without pushing debt up at its current level right now. And again, just to wrap it up, the, the rating agencies like to see municipalities that are high-rated kind of look into the future a little bit, to look at a, at a five-year plan, to look in and say, listen, here's our capital needs, here's how like we, we'd like to structure it, and try and avoid debt coming down in a couple of years and then going back up like a roller coaster. They'd like to see it planned out so it stays relatively flat. And I think it's possible with some planning that the town could layer in, like I said, about $40 million. So to wrap up, congratulations on saving almost $1 million on the debt refinancing. And the town is well-positioned to, to consider new capital needs without putting any, any pressure on the, the current debt service budget.
Very good. Anyone have any questions? Thank you very much.
You bet. Have a good night.
The next presentation we have on the agenda is for the communication system by the police department.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and members of Town Council, Mr. Town Manager. Thank you for your time this evening. So I'd like to introduce some of the parties that are here with me tonight. Of course, I'm with Fire Chief Dave Bromley and Public Works Director Jerry Lukowski. I also have Deputy Chief Rene DeBengis, our Lieutenant Jared DeAndrea, and our new communications supervisor, Walter Golombeski. And a representative of NORCOM, Connecticut, Andy Langless is in the back if we do have any questions relative to the project that he'd be able to answer for us. Our radio system for the Fire Department and the Police Department was last upgraded in 2010 and 2011. Chief Bromley was an integral part of that project at the time. If there are any questions regarding the existing radio system, I'm sure you'd probably be the right person to answer them. That system right now is going on 15 years old. It is no longer supported by Motorola. It is at its end of life. It's running on Microsoft Vista, if anybody remembers that. That was the operating system from Microsoft that was around about 15 years ago. So that leaves those computers extremely vulnerable right now. If they, any files ever got corrupted on those computers, it's going to be very difficult for them to, for NORCOM to recover it. Right now, we're on a time and material repair basis with NORCOM. Because they are out of support, our system is kind of being held together with used parts and Band-Aids right now. It's older analog technology and the system that we're on right now is called a single-site system, where we have one primary antenna in town that does all broadcasting from that one site. So it is limited, if that one site goes down, we have to switch over to what's called a backup antenna. And that backup antenna transmits at a much lower power level from a less desirable location, giving us a lot less coverage in the community when that does occur. With the assistance of U.S. Representative Johanna Hayes, the Watertown Police Department applied for a COPS grant through the U.S. Department of Justice back towards the end of 2021. By the time we learned of this grant and that we were eligible to apply, we had two weeks to get that application submitted. In working quickly with NORCOM at the time, the thought was to write a grant covering the cost of replacing and upgrading the police department's system as it exists today. That replacement cost was $3,375,000 by the best estimate in working with NORCOM, Connecticut. The grant was awarded in that full amount in December of 2022. So NORCOM has been our long-term radio provider. They're a Motorola manufacturer representative and they hold the public contract with the state of Connecticut. During '23, '24, the past two years, we have been working closely with NORCOM, we've been working with the Fire Department and the Public Works Department in, in determining how we're going to move forward with this project. And we started looking at the town's communication system from a much more holistic perspective that if we're simply replacing just the police department's equipment, that's going to leave the Fire Department behind and leave the Public Works Department unable to communicate with the police department because we'd be going to an upgraded digital platform compared to the Fire Department, which is on an older VHF analog system and Public Works is, is on UHF like the police department, but also on an older analog system. From an economy of scale perspective, doing, upgrading all three departments' radio systems at the same time would provide enormous savings to the town compared to upgrading each department's communication system separately. If the police department systems get upgraded by itself, we will no longer be able to communicate directly with the street department and we already cannot communicate directly with the Fire Department because they are on an entirely separate bandwidth. So when we looked at this project from a holistic perspective, simply upgrading the police department's system as it exists now would leave us with a system that's no better than it is right now. Our coverage wouldn't become any better in town. We have an existing site up on Judd Farm right now that's in an older deteriorating barn. And as grateful we are to the Judd family for allowing us to have our equipment in that barn for so many years, I think the time has come, and NORCOM agrees, that our equipment should be removed from, from that facility and placed on its own exterior pad with a, a pole. And we have a significant deficit in radio communications in the northeast section of town, particularly Black Rock State Park and as you drop down Route 6 down and towards Thomaston, that kind of falls off our radio grid. So installing an additional site at Black Rock Dam would fill in that entire gap for us and provide a lot of coverage because we, along with the Fire Department, even though it's not our primary jurisdiction, we're in Black Rock State Park quite a bit for reports of lost hikers and injured hikers and assisting the Incon Police Department at the campground down at Black Rock State Park when they may have domestic issues or other emergencies in the park, particularly in the summer months. So from a holistic perspective, what we are looking to do now would be to migrate the Fire Department over to a UHF platform, which both Public Works and the police are already on, upgrading the Fire Department's system to an equal status as the police departments, both the Fire Department and the police department. We'd get all new, not only a new radio system, but all new radios, both for their fire trucks, police cars, and for individual firefighters and police officers. And Public Works would get all new radios for all their vehicles and employees so we could all, your three main service departments in town, we'd be able to communicate with each other. And as both Chief and Director Lukowski can attest, on, on August 18th, when we had significant flooding in town, all three of us were in town and looking to communicate with each other in any, any means we can, running from one site to another in town where, where problems were developing. So being able to be all on the same bandwidth and be able to communicate together on the same exact radio would certainly be beneficial as far as interoperability is concerned. The, to build this system obviously is going to be more expensive than what the initial grant covered. That grant is $3,375,000. We did get a price quote back from Motorola to build this enhanced system. Comes in at $4,911,887 as a, as a top number. So the other upgrades that, that we would get with this $4,911,887 eleven thousand, it doesn't, it expands this, instead of a single-site system where we have one antenna that's transmitting every single tower site that we have in town, which we're proposing, we currently have five, and we're proposing six, we'd become both a transmit and receive site. So if any single tower went down for any reason, every other tower in town would be continuing to operate in both transmitting and receiving, and we would have very little coverage loss from the loss of any single tower. So that in and of itself is a significant enhancement for the town's radio system. Each site would be alarmed, there'd be, you know, any tampering or issues that we have with the sites, any communication loss with each site, we'd be able to see that from a master control panel. I think I covered everything else that's on this particular slide. The map you see on the left is our current transmission capability, where you, you can see that there's several gaps, particularly in the northeast side of town, where our main, our main tower simply cannot hit those areas. The right-side map there is what our transmission coverage in town would look like with the new proposed system, going to a six-tower system that have, each tower would be transmit and receive. I don't have the actual receiving maps here, but they would, they look very similar, where the, the coverage, any, any bear spots get filled in by having the extra towers and by going digital. Going digital increases the capability of the system quite a bit as far as coverage Again, the longer a single-site operation, we'd be moving to what's called the P-25 digital platform, and Fire would move over to UHF to be compatible with police and Public All of our radios, both handheld and in-car or fire truck, or dump truck, if you want to leave Public Works out, would be upgraded so that they would be digital-compatible. This would enhance our abilities for mutual aid response, not only out of town, but having other departments come in on mutual aid. We would have a much more enhanced ability to communicate with departments outside our jurisdiction. And, and as was discussed, our, all of our town departments, we'd be in a better spot to be able to communicate with each other. Our dispatch center would get all-new equipment. We'd finally retire our Microsoft Vista computers, which have been actually running now for almost fifteen years straight. We've had to replace some components of them, but they are still the same computer. Two out of our three are failing rapidly. We are hoping that they can get through a few more months to get this project underway, but they would be upgraded to the latest and greatest technology. So the purpose of this presentation tonight is to respectfully ask the Town Council to fund the enhanced project for your three large public service, public safety departments here, and cover the one million, five hundred, thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars over the allotment of the grant to, in basically upgrade the Fire and Police Department's systems and get Public Works all-new radios. Dave, Jerry, do you guys have anything you want to add?
Thank you, Chief. That was a great presentation. Like the chief had said, I was part of a group back in 2010 who rebuilt the communication center and re-upgraded all the systems in town for police, fire, and highway. At that time, it was said that your system is only going to be good for ten years, that's all they can say, because of equipment services, so we are out of that system now, or it should have been replaced four years ago. We have issues where it's now has become a public safety issue. We've had calls at, like, the last one was on the 25th of September, we had a call at Taft School, where the dispatchers sent out a tone alert. It didn't go over the radio. It went over our phone systems that we have, but at five o'clock in the morning, most people don't have their phones on. Dispatchers weren't aware that the, the radio didn't work. Luckily, myself and the deputy were on our way to Pennsylvania to look at Newsletter Two at that time. We called the dispatch center, and they were unaware at the time that the radio didn't work and had failed. At that time, they looked at their system, and the whole, the whole system went down. I believe police was out of radios, everybody was out of radios. They had to reboot the system, and luckily, when they rebooted it, it came back up and we got the equipment out. But we are, it's a public safety issue now, it's become, we need this to be done, so we're all on the same page, we're all working together, and I think it's a good investment that the town should do.
Thank you.
On the Public Works side, I know the chief mentioned eighteen August was a big day for us, but communications was great for us closing down roads from the amount of flooding. But also on the winter side, when we get an EMS call, we know the location, we're the closest to the house. We make sure that route is cleared for the ambulance to come to the site, and also the other snowplow routes are being cleared to bring the ambulance through the town to the resident's house. And we even make the call if we have to plow the driveway for the resident. And we wouldn't have that if we weren't on the dispatch and talking to police, fire, and EMS. Thank you.
Thank you.
The significant issue with only upgrading the police department is we'd be going to a digital platform, which is what they make now, leaving Fire and Public Works on an older analog system. Analog and digital do not talk to each other at all. So it would make much more sense, especially to do all now at one time, which would save a lot of money, rather than doing this in different stages and different years, because each site, particularly the Fire Department, their VHF, that's an entirely different set of transmission equipment at each tower, because it's on a different band. So if we all went to UHF, we'd only need one set of equipment at each site, because it would all, we'd all be on the same band.
And also, just to let you know, with, with the NORCOM Motorola, when Motorola bids everything, they like to bid it at a one-shot deal, and that's how you get your best pricing, is you put everything as a package, what you need, your most of what you need, and that comes out as the best package that you can get. If you try to piecemeal it and go back and forth with them, you lose your, you lose your bargaining with the Motorola.
Makes sense. Anybody have any questions?
I have one quick question that you may or may not know offhand. Of the roughly five million dollars to do the full project, do you know how much is for, like, the larger infrastructure versus the cost of all the individual radios the departments will have?
Andy, is that something you'd be, you'd be available to answer? I don't know, I think they don't break the cost out in their itemized list. They simply give an overall number for the whole project, so it's a, it's a good question. I can tell you that a typical handheld radio that a police officer holds is roughly five to six thousand dollars, and the radios that are in our cars are about nine thousand dollars apiece. Add, add all that up, it's a lot of money, but I still don't think it comes close to the actual infrastructure that are, that's at each tower site. That's the lion's share of that, of that number.
Thank you.
Through the chair. Chief, I know we've talked about technology in the past, and I can't remember if you've brought this before the committee. I think you've mentioned that this is going to be an issue at some point, but you have had some technology upgrades. Can you remind me what that, what that was, like body cams, and were there other things that, that, that we've had more recent?
We have a significant amount of technology at the police department now. Body cameras is one. We have the recording equipment in our interview and interrogation room, which is state statute. We have tasers now, which have a significant amount of technology that comes with those tasers. We recently upgraded our 911 call recorder, which is the piece of equipment that records all of our incoming lines, including the 911 lines. We've upgraded our uninterruptible power supplies, which is actually part of this radio project. We simply had to carve that out of the grant early, because our UPS systems failed, and they, they had to be replaced immediately.
Okay. I think maybe that's what I'm thinking about, having had that conversation before. Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
I do, through the chair. Chief, given the green light on a project like this one, do you think it would be completed?
So if we go to contract, by the end of the calendar year, they generally, NORCOM generally tells us it's about an eighteen-month period to have the project completed. We would ask for an early release of all the subscriber units, which are all the actual radios that go into the vehicles and all the handheld radios that we all use, to get those in service early while they procure and build the system on the back end. Because they're, these are very complex systems. These actually get built in a warehouse setting first and tested before they're even brought out to the field. Public Works would be assisting on a couple of our sites that require construction. You know, those, dat mapping and work, a lot of that's already been done, but we would still have to get the shovel and the ground. We're getting agreements with the Army Corps of Engineers to allow our site to be on their property over at the dam, as well as working with the Department of Transportation on encroachment permits, so there's a lot of work on the back end that needs to be done.
Also, the life expectancy of this type of equipment, is it about ten years?
It is. Getting all, all technology, ten years is about the life of the equipment. You know, we're, we're going fifteen here, odds are you'll probably get fifteen again, but by the time fifteen years comes about, the town will be in a similar position, where that, where it's going to be ready to be replaced again.
Thank you.
Just to add to that, I, I believe with Motorola, you can buy, like, preventative-maintenance agreements, where the equipment, as it gets updated, your system gets updated, so you're always up to technology as it comes, instead of waiting to ten years on your way back, and now you've got to buy all new stuff. So there's, there's ways that we could keep up to date with it, spending a little extra money.
I'll get those numbers and present them to the Town Manager for review. They're called systems updates agreements, where the town can elect, basically, to pay a certain amount every single year, usually out of an operating budget, which kind of pre-buys your upgrades as they come out, rather than waiting for that ten- or fifteen-year mark and having to do a large capital expense.
Yes, sir.
I have a question.
If I may, I fully support this, the presentation by the chiefs, Mr. Lukowski, the command staff. It shows that this money would be well-spent, not only for public safety, but for the coordination of effort between our three tiers of public safety, for the community as a whole, police, fire, Public Works. It would also prevent, as the chief said, bear spots. I was trained to call them dead spots, as Chief Bromley would remember. Nothing worse than being in a location in town when more assistance is needed and nobody can answer, because they can't hear you. This would prevent the dead spots. And from somebody making a request, we need fire, we need Public Works, they would go through one central dispatch, and not only that, those working as the supervisors in Public Works and Fire and Police and vice versa, they'd be right on the same page at that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, through the chair. Oh, Gary has a question. I do, too.
Oh, Gary has one?
Yeah. On this system there, I was asked, could the board have that be added to this system somehow?
So because this would be a digital system, my, I, that would be a question directly for NORCOM, but my guess is anyone who has an older radio that's not digital-compatible, those radios would need to be upgraded.
Okay. All right, thanks.
That off, okay.
Chief?
The ASOs.
The ASOs?
Yeah.
Yes.
The schools.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure they have radios.
Chief, are you concerned that the eighteen months to, you know, twenty months from now, these devices will be seventeen years old? Are you concerned that we'll have more of those incidents when Taft made that call and we didn't, it didn't go through? Is that something you're concerned about, or will you be able to just reboot it, or?
Yeah, we're, we're very concerned. Any type of reboot on these computers right now, we, we cross our fingers that it will come back up. So yes, we are, we are nervous. We do have contingency plans in place, including the state of Connecticut being able to come in, and, and they have equipment that they can loan us to kind of hold us over in the event we have an issue. But yeah, we're, we're at that point now, we're on a, on a day-by-day basis, we're keeping our fingers crossed that our communication system stays running. It's just at that age where, you know, it's out of support. There's no easy parts to get anymore for it. Luckily, you know, NORCOM has older parts laying around their facility that they're able to, you know, find and keep us going.
Okay. Will you keep us updated on any issues or changes?
Sure can.
Thank you.
Just one quick question. The six sites for the towers, are those all clear, already town-owned property?
So some of the sites, so there, we'd be only adding one additional site. So the, that would be at Black Rock Dam. And we're working with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, which has been a great organization to work with. I don't expect any issues in getting a memorandum of agreement signed with them. They've been very accommodating. The, the Judd Farm site will be an outdoor site on existing town property, and every other site already exists, it would simply be upgraded.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
Yes.
One more comment. One thing that I like about the system is that everybody working at, at the time of exigent emergencies, such as the recent flooding issues, everybody working through either their portable radio or the radio inside their vehicle, there'd be no discrepancy between analog, digital. Everybody would be aware of what's going on at the current time, right then and there. And everything is also going to be recorded for posterity through the central communications, correct, Chief?
That, that's correct, and I can't stress enough, and I, I certainly don't want to insult your intelligence, but, and I know you know this, but those radios for Public Works, Fire, and Police are our lifeline. You know, we, we have that radio on our hip, and it is our lifeline on every single call we go on, to get us extra help if we need it, to, you know, communicate the circumstances of that call, for dispatch to communicate, you know, their circumstances of the call to us, and keep us updated on information that they find that, you know, from an officer and firefighter and public works safety standpoint, the communication system is by far our most critical piece of equipment that, that we use every day.
Through the chair, one last question. The grant was initially awarded a few years back. What was the delay or what was going on since we were awarded the grant to today?
The fact that just about every other town got ARPA money at the exact same time, and this is why fire trucks are so backlog, how, how long does it take to get a fire truck?
Three years.
About three years to get a fire truck. Communication systems are about the same right now. A lot of towns are using ARPA funds to upgrade their communication systems, and it's really backlogged that industry.
Yes, quickly. The, the five million cost, in ten years, do we see that being, I, I understand that the cost is going to go up in ten years, but was, and this is kind of off Jonathan's question, I think, and he may not be able to answer this, but was it, was at least a, a portion of that due to us needing to move, you know, build on the Judd Farm or away from the Judd Farm site to get us to the point where we can be set up better for going forward? Or do we anticipate that, that cost to be the same in scope in ten years? Or was it more this time around so we could get this system going and put into place?
Is that something you want to comment on, Andy?
How are you? Good. So I'm Andy Langlis from NORCOM. I, I think the question that you're asking is, the, the current system is, as the chief mentioned, called a main standby system, so you have a primary transmitter and a backup transmitter. This next design distributes the, the radio coverage the, the radio coverage amongst several sites. So there is a certain element of building out your sites and developing the sites. So I would, and if coverage needs remain the same, I anticipate that the next go-around, the next generation, will be a replacement in kind
Right.
with the same constellation.
Right, that's my question, yeah. And thank you. And briefly, the, we're all moving, I think this is a great idea. It's just now we're putting all our eggs in one basket. So I guess my question is, and I'm totally oblivious to the technology, so bear with me, but moving to digital, are we, what are the detriments to that? I mean, could that susceptible to hacking, or is it, is there a benefit to having us on different?
So I, I think the digital platform is the state, the federal-recognized P-25 standard for interoperability and compatibility. So to the point of mutual aid and interoperability, that's the recognized standard. So nothing is proprietary. So the competitive advantage amongst manufacturers, there isn't one. It's a level playing field. So it's in the first responders and the town's best interest to be on that P-25 standard. Was there a second part to the question that I answered?
I was just curious as to whether there was an evaluation as to whether, you know, what the detriments are to moving to digital. I know that's the standard now, but.
Yeah, what it, what it does in a layperson's terms is, if someone's talking on the radio and you're getting static over the radio with that person, the digital will clear it up and clean it up. If they, if the digital can get a voice, it cleans it up and you don't hear static. If it's that bad, you don't hear anything, is what it is.
Yeah, understood.
So the P-25 enhances the transmission of, of your radios.
Yeah, I was just curious if there was an, an inquiry into, you know, whether making that switch could be susceptible to hacking or other, and I'm sure there's been
I don't think it's any more
all types of studies, but.
I, I don't think it's any more susceptible than the current technology, if that's reassuring.
What it does is it, it takes voice, turns it into ones and zeros, transmit those ones and zeros over the airwave, receiving radios, then grab those ones and zeros and convert it back into sound. That's what digital transmissions is compared to the analog transmissions. It's that of actually transmitting the actual sound or airwave.
Now, there also is an option to go encrypt it, which is encrypted means that you privatize the radio, or people in the scanners will not hear that system, because it's encrypted. And so it's for special ops and stuff like that, the police department would have, where they're out doing something really dangerous and they don't want people to hear them, they will go to the encrypted channel.
Thank you.
Through the chair, just one brief question for the NORCOM representative. Can you please speak to the pricing for the systems updates agreements that Chief Bromley referred to?
So actually, I can explain the concept, but not figures. I, I'm not aware of the figures. But the SUA is, is similar to the as-a-service that we're seeing in the IT world. The traditional procurement process for, for radio systems have been large capital investments spaced out 10, 15 years. The SUA is more of an operationalized expense that will refresh technology as it becomes or nears obsolescence, so that you avoid the need for the big forklift overhaul.
Thank you.
I believe in one of our meetings we had with NORCOM, with, with the representative, they were talking, it was 100 or 125,000 a year is what it was going to cost for the, for the plan.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Item C is the discussion regarding the reallocation and further reallocation of remaining ARPA funds.
So basically, to put this in a nutshell and kind of understand how do we finance this, there are unallocated ARPA funds. There are funds that were allocated and were not expensed. Good, good?
Yep.
So we need to commit our ARPA funds by the end of this calendar year, so contractually commit those monies. So we started out with about $6.38 million. The council had approved approximately $5.11 million. There was approximately $1.14 million that was unallocated and was just left there as we moved through the process. And then we had allocated unexpended funds to the amount of $223,461. Just as a reminder, if we go to the next slide, please, we've, we still have money. Of that $5.1 million that were expensed or allocated by the town council, $1.4 million is left for the municipal parking lot on Main Street. The $1 million which we allocated last year for the design phase of the road safety audit from Route, Main Street 73 at the Waterbury Line all the way up to Route 6 and 63 in Watertown, which equaled about $2.4 million of that allocated money. Next slide, please. These are the items that were, the money was allocated the year, and I apologize if I don't remember the year, I think it was 2022, where we allocated ARPA funds to offset our budget. These items, the money we're putting, these line items, and they were either expensed or almost expensed completely, and then there were some items that were just, we never spent. So what I'm suggesting is that we capture the money that was allocated and not expended. We allocate the reminding, $1.145 million, and I'm asking that the town council consider allocating up to $256,000 from the general fund. I did not have the updated numbers, so when I prepared this presentation, I went off a $5 million project. I noticed that there was a change in numbers by about $88,000, I think we were reduced by. I would still say that we allocate up to $5 million in case there's any contingencies and things that may pop up, and whatever money that is not expensed would be left in the general fund. Our public works department will be assisting in the build-out of the new site, which will hopefully save them some money for the town. And this will kind of give us an opportunity to move this project forward. Knowing that it's a 10-to-15-year project, a project that will last 10 to 15 years, bonding something over 20, 25 years is probably not the best way to do a project like this. So we do have the funds available. It's my recommendation that we move this to a special meeting and discuss further this funding process. There is also some damage that happened at Crest Brook Culver during the storm in August. I think it was August, correct?
August 18th.
Thank you, August 18th. There, it's a safety issue. We need to get that project done. I propose taking that $126,880 out of the ARPA funds, and we fulfill these two full projects. So by taking this action, it'll fulfill our obligations to the federal government in the usage of ARPA funds, and we get ahead a little bit on two projects. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Through the chair. Regarding the roughly $1.1 million of previously unincorporated funds from the ARPA funds, I believe that's, yeah. I, I could be wrong on this, but I thought we did kind of allocate all the funds at one point. I'm trying to remember what I'm not remembering that would leave us with a little over $1 million.
We had discussed on how those funds may be used. We never allocated that remaining 1 point, whatever number is, 1.14. So it is out there with the pending December 31st deadline, and this project is, as, as important as it is, I think the best usage for that money that's left is to be used on these projects.
Anybody else? Yes.
Mark, I, I think I lost track of some of the things you're saying. You kept talking about project, and when you say that, you mean the police communication radios?
That and the Culver project for Crest Brook.
Okay.
So I'm
Sorry, go ahead.
I was going to say, I think it's broken down on the last page.
Right, I see that. Okay. I just, you said something else about some other long-term project, and I, I just didn't follow that. My question is, you also said for the parking lot, there's that slide.
Me too, Mark.
Oh, there is, yeah. So the 1.4 million, that, that still needs to be spent, but how is that different than what you said at the beginning of the meeting, where all the money has gone to Greenberg and he's doing all the work?
Well, we allocated the money, so it's sitting there in a line item. We used $100,000 as a deposit for the, the job to start and move forward. So the remaining $1.4 million is in a line item waiting to be paid out upon the completion of the project.
Okay, all right. That makes sense. And then going back to Jonathan's point, I did think, I thought that we had created, or we're going to use some of those funds for like overruns or something along those lines, but we're pretty, I mean, we're, we're convinced that the 1.4 million is going to cover everything that we want done in the parking lot?
Yes, we entered into agreement for $1.5 million. That is a completed project. The only thing that was left out was the actual wiring for a parking kiosk, because at this point, we're not going to charge for parking, allowing it to, you know, simulate into the area, and at some point, it'll be piped for that, and we can install it if we so choose.
Okay, I guess my concern too is then, because the system is so costly now, and the chief said 10, you know, maybe 15 years, will this be part of the budgeting process over the next 10 years? I mean, will the police department be saving for this money? Because, you know, we're not going to have ARPA monies down the line, and we might not get a federal grant either. So how are we going to plan for this in the future?
So we are working towards capital planning. Watertown hasn't typically done that officially. We are working towards that. So that is something that we would consider, but understanding that any budgetary amount set would raise the budget by that exact amount. It would just have to be a discussion that we have.
Thank you.
Okay, we're ready for the motion.
Any other questions? No. I move to set a special town meeting to be held October 21st, 2024, at 6:30 for the following. Item one, to consider authorizing an appropriation of the previously allocated American Rescue Act planned funds in the amount of $223,461 for the communication and Crest Brook projects. Item two, to consider an appro, to consider authorizing an appropriation in the amount of $1,145,141 from the American Rescue Act plan for the project, communication project. Item three, to consider authorizing an appropriation from the general fund in the amount of $256,397 for the communication project.
Is there a sec?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to set the town meeting for those three items. Any further questions?
Would that special meeting be two weeks, that's two weeks from today, would that be?
It's on the date, I don't know.
Remember that be the 22nd and not the 21st?
21st.
21st.
I think it would be the 21st.
It says the 21st.
21st.
It's the 21st.
It is the 21st, thank you.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
The motion passes unanimously. Item E.
I move to authorize an appropriation from the general fund in the amount of $7,764.80 for registrar's early voting expense, expenses, funds received through the, through early voting grant and previously deposited into the general fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining? The motion passes unanimously.
Item F. I move to approve a resolution authorizing a bid waiver for the Water and Sewer Authority for the purchase of a sole-source provider of a Grandfos vertical turbine pump from Carlson Systems for the amount of $36,740.
Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Do we have an explanation about this?
Mr. McMahon?
My name's Dave McMahon, Superintendent of the Water and Sewer Authority. The existing pump on the pictures that I supplied with the waiver, the Grumpis vertical turbine pump, the sole source for Grumpis in the Northeast is Carlson Systems. What I'm looking to do is replace the existing turbine pump that's there. It's been in service since early 60s, so it's beyond its life. So potential, it's leaking and it needs to be repaired. So instead of spending half the money to repair it, I want to spend the money to replace it. Just like we had the issue with pump number one, where we had to allocate the $23,000 roughly to have that one repaired. So the pump station is, needs to be upgraded. So I'm, I'm looking to sole-source another vertical turbine pump to replace the existing turbine pump.
Anybody have a question? Okay.
Dave, would you mind just, just giving an explanation what sole source is, so that we could answer the question that was asked?
So sole, sole source is the manufacturer divided up the country. So Carlson System is the only one that can sell Grumpis in the Northeast territory. So the sole source is, I want to replace the turbine pump with a turbine pump, but I'm choosing Grumpis turbine pump, and Carlson System is the sole source of that pump. So that's what the sole source for Grumpis is.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining? The motion passes unanimously.
I move to authorize an amendment five to the contract with Paint Kirk, Connecticut, LLC, which outlines the terms of the agreement to be extended to November 26, 2026, and also additionally allows for the renewal of successive one-year terms unless either party notifies the other in writing at least 60 days in advance of the renewal term, commencing date that the agreement will not be renewed.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Just for clarification, the previous amendments were to extend the contract previously. That's all they were. So this is this extension. Anybody have any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The ma, motion passes unanimously.
I move that the town council refer to the ordinance subcommittee, the proposed modifications of the Watertown Code of Ordinants, Articles Three, Watertown Town Hall Preservation Committee, to modify the ordinance to reflect town buildings.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anybody have any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
I move to authora, I move to authorize an appropriation from the general fund in the amount of $500 for police law enforcement equipment funds received from an anonymous donor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing appropriation from the general fund in the amount of $5,557 for tax refunds.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve a resolution authorizing tax refunds.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Motion for executive session.
Okay. I move that the town council enter into executive session along with the town council members present and the town manager to discuss personnel matters to include employment of the finance director and the town manager's employment contract.
Is there, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, here we go.